Good evening. I'd like to call November 13, 2018, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I want to remind all present that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hand.
Did you do Chris first, but I could do it here first. We're just gonna have Chris. Okay, sounds good. All right, just want to go on, I have order here. Today we have Representative elect Chris Hendricks. Last meeting, we wanted to invite him in to go over a few, I guess, not issues, but a few wish lists, things that we need to get done. Mr. Hendricks, if you want to enter the podium.
Yeah.
If you want to introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. Everyone knows I'm Chris Hendricks. As you said, the newly elected state representative in this district. So I'm here to listen. I'm just going over some of the proposals, a little bit of the Chapter 90 funding. I know that was a big part of my platform during the campaign and see a lot of other things as well. So I'm excited to hear what your agenda is for the next year or so, and I'm excited to help you guys in any way I can.
We thought you could get this done in January.
Yeah.
We have a list for February. Like you said, Chapter 90 is the noble new one.
Certainly, the Chapter 90 is the lifeblood of our road maintenance program. It is the majority of our funding. In fact, at the moment, it's all of our funding, and it's critical to us. We maintain 86 miles of roadway and historically that our town has limited only the money that the state has given us under the Chapter 90 allocation. And when it's delayed past April 1st, we have difficulty placing the jobs out for proper bid in time for the summer road work. So it's important that not only do we get the money, but that the legislature agree to do it on the April 1st deadline, which has not always been observed. We did a pavement management plan, and we determined that only about 8.7 or roughly 10% of our roads in town are right in the position right now of not needing any maintenance. The rest all need maintenance. Based upon the pavement management plan, we need almost 15 million to 45 million over a period of 10 years to properly maintain the roads to the specifications dictated by the state. So consequently, obviously, as you can see, we're extraordinarily underfunded to do this properly. Now, I think particularly our Department of Public Works Director does an admirable job, given what he has to work with, but we have a situation where we're always behind and always trying to catch up. So that's our issue on Chapter 90. Did you want me to go through the rest?
Yeah, I mean, he's been reading through it, so.
One of the other issues, well, there's many issues, as you can see, we need to make sure that we increase the circuit breaker's funding for special education. Right now, originally, the state had promised many years ago that when we exceeded a certain dollar amount of education for our special needs students, that the state would reimburse the town 100%. Right now, we're currently running at 70%, and the number of special education or special needs children is ever increasing. So this is a kind of situation where the state wants us to do it, and certainly, we want to do it because we do care about our young people, but we need the state to live up to its obligation of the 100% reimbursement. Our third priority is a sustainable OPEB cost for cities and towns. I'm sure this is not the first time you've heard that. We are looking at a liability, depending upon which actuary we talk to, around $16 million. We have approximately $300,000 set aside for it. We need the ability to make changes in the post-employment benefits extended to our retirees that is necessarily going to require law changes. And then, of course, the other question would really come into, we are sort of bound by the state retirements program where town employees do not get Social Security, that you've locked us into a retirement program that we can't ill afford. So if we were to adopt private industry standards for the administrative and of town government, we'd be able to do a 401, be able to pay into Social Security properly, and then this liability wouldn't be so astounding. I've given you the reasons why we need to do that OPEB response in the letter, and with the permission of the board, I'll post this letter onto the website. Our other requirements, of course, as always, we're unnerved by an unfunded state mandate, so any opportunity that you have to make sure that the state doesn't saddle us with additional requirements. Lately, the most egregious example of that is the state allowing OSHA to apply to municipalities. So that's another unfunded mandate. We have no funding to comply with that, yet we are going to do it anyway. There is the requirement for regional vocational transportation reimbursement. Again, originally, when the state promised to do this and promoted regionalization of education initiatives, the promise was 100% reimbursement for transportation. Currently, we're at 71.5%. We would like some action taken on the modernization of procurement and public construction laws. Currently, we are bound by prevailing wages, which means essentially that if the church does work across the street and the electrician walks across the street to do something at town hall, he miraculously becomes $40 an hour more expensive. So I'd really like further justification as to why the town should be paying in excess of the wage currently assigned competitively in the community, why I need to provide to a prevailing wage that's way above what is currently in the community. And that adds about 16 to 20% to our construction costs.
Can I just touch one point on that? So a good example of the town of Kuschna, Chris, is that we built a police department four or five years ago. It was completion, chief?
2015.
2015, we completed our police department. I spoke when I was a member of the committee on that, and if we weren't subject to the laws, that was the prevailing wage laws, we could have built a $5.7 million police department where the state had no stake in the game according to the law. They didn't have a dime in the game, and yet we had to do the prevailing wage. If we didn't have to do that, 5.7 probably would have been a two, two and a half million dollar project, and we could have saved our taxpayers an exorbitant amount of money. So for that particular case, if the state doesn't have a stake in the game, meaning money in the game via grants and things towards a project, they shouldn't be dictating to the local municipalities how we spend our tax dollars. That's it.
Well, it happens like that throughout my employment down at the house in America. It's the same thing. It's ridiculous, like you said, it's.
An outdated law should be taken out.
Yeah, no, I deal a lot with the prevailing wage in my line of work, and it's a lot easier for a state to adhere to those laws than a smaller municipality or a small town. So, you know, I didn't even think of that, that the smaller towns would bear a bigger burden, obviously. So yeah, that's something I would absolutely love to address, especially with the reimbursement scheme that you already talked about being underway.
Correct. We have further issues to make sure that the ambulance billing remains unchanged. Right now, every year, the insurance company submit legislative requests that would allow them to directly reimburse the patients for ambulance calls rather than paying the provider, which in this case is the town. So that would leave us in the job of collecting against the individual rather than the insurance company, and that would put us in a very unfavorable position. We have an issue, as you're probably aware, regarding PJ Keating, which is a large industrial gravel pit and asphalt plant locally. We have worked very closely with DEP, but their enforcement has been extraordinarily underfunded. So instead of being down there once a quarter, they're there once every four years, and I think that that is hurting our ability to make sure that we are properly protected. It's also costing the town additional money where we've had to hire outside consultants to review their performance and their adherence to the laws. This is gonna, this is a problem because it hits us with dust and odor and noise and traffic on South Main Street, which leads us, of course, to our next subject. South Main Street is a state road, and it needs significant repair. The granite curbs are below the state standards of six inches. The road has numerous potholes and defects that have not been repaired by the state, and we'd like the state to coordinate with the town so that water and sewer infrastructure could be upgraded at the same time that the street is upgraded, so we don't have to get up twice. There are also gas mains underneath that road that haven't been touched in over 60 years, and I think that leads us to our next point, and in particular with the Marimac Valley situation, it is something that we are particularly aware of, of the natural gas infrastructure in the town. We have two things, one, an LNG storage and distribution facility on Peckham Road, which has underground gas lines, and then in addition, we have street areas, neighborhoods with the gas lines. I will say that they have been responsive to our request to examine the pipe. With the blasting coming from the quarry, it shakes the pipes. Are they staying leaky? Those pipes are really old. So we're a little bit more aware of having them checked out frequently. Every source has been responsive to us, but if they come down and check for a leak today doesn't mean we won't have a leak tomorrow. In addition, they check the road for the leaks, they don't check from the road to the house. So that's an issue that I think you're gonna need, well, I'm sure you'll see more of that in this coming session relative to Marimac.
Just interject one more. I called the DEP. I wanted to know when the last time they had done air quality sampling near the LNG tanks, and the answer was they have never done air quality testing near the LNG tanks. Because the tanks are 50 years old, they predate the current laws. If they had been built more recently, there would have been standards for air quality sampling, but because they're 50 years old, they are not required to do any air quality sampling. And I suspect that there's a lot of natural gas, methane floating around that facility that's in the air, but we don't know because there's no requirement that it's sampled or tested or.
So there's no, there's an exception cut out for like a grandfathered in because it's old?
Because it's grandfather, that's what I was told. It's because it's 50 years old, when it was built, there was no ongoing standard for, and I've seen, I'm gonna say infrared, but not infrared, but those things just throw gas in the air all the time.
So we would also, okay.
I'm sorry.
We also are having a concern with civil service as an antiquated system, and we would allow for the revocation, we would prefer a bill for the revocation of the statute at the local option without the approval of a home rule petition by the legislature. Mass Municipal Association has proposed a bill that would require cities and towns to provide documentation to the Legislative Joint Committee on Public Service, so that would outline what public policy we were going to change, and that would replace the civil service statute in the community. Right now, in order for us to remove a department or a chief from civil service requires not only an act of town meeting, but an act of the legislature, which can take eight to 10 months to get. So it slows us down dramatically when we wish to make some changes, and civil service just doesn't respond the way it was originally designed. We have another request for changes in legislation for the public right of way, where a utility is locating poles and wires in the public right of way. This town has no authority to move poles and wires, and we can't charge the utility if they don't perform properly. They can drag their heels as long as they want to. For us, we then have to appeal to the Department of Public Utilities to gain action or mandating of the utility to actually act, and this is something we would like to take into local option. Those are the highlights. That's January's list.
Congratulations on the job.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add one more thing you said about the South Main Street road. The quarry, the trucks, they come down here all the time. We have 240 in Fairhaven, and I know this is probably gonna go nowhere. We've heard every reason or excuse why it can't be done, shouldn't be done. I had spoken to Selectmen in Fairhaven, and they get a lot of complaints about trucks going down all the road that way, too. So if there's any way that we can tie in, you know, 240 to get the trucks, at least one way out to get them off there, because they come down Tackin Hill through Bedford, down 140, they're all over, and I know it's a nuisance in the north that Fairhaven, I don't know if you work with Strauss or somebody.
No, I want to make that a priority because I know that you guys have been dealing with that issue. And what was I gonna say? So the entrance that they wanted to put on the other side, is that federally, the federal issue there, they can't do that? And that's completely off the table?
I don't, that's what we were told.
You can kind of look into that. I actually agree 100% with Mr. Chopper. I mean, that's something that we have discussed in the past with state officials to no prevail because they say that would take the federal government and getting them involved, state highways, and they supersede the state when it comes to highway trajectory and that stuff. But if it's something that you can look into and at least come back to the town and say, these are the roadblocks to doing it, or this is the steps that would be necessary to move forward to it, maybe the board could act alongside of you and try to push forward with it.
Yeah, no, it's, if it's a federal issue, and then, you know, we obviously have to figure out what that is, and if it's, if we can work around it, we'll work with them. You know, I always thought it was, it's a foregone conclusion, that's off the table completely, but if it's a matter of reaching out, talking to a certain agency, and then getting the conversation started, I think that's the best way to start.
Is it genuine, any other question? No, I mean, lack of funding, you know? The state always comes in and creates these programs and says, we're gonna fund these things at 100%, and then, you know, three, five years down the road, we're down to 60, 70%. CPC is another one, that we do not get our funding 100% anymore. We're not even near 100%. I think, what are we at, like 25%? 18%? I mean, I was going 25% being nice, but 18% on CPC, so that is driven off the table. So I guess the moral of the story is, you know, no more unfunded mandates for municipalities. It sounds great when state legislators legislate, and they say, we're gonna do this, we're gonna fund it at 100%, but then in two to three years, it really lies back on the taxpayers, especially in a small municipality as we are. We just can't afford to keep taking on the additional cost of what they say they would fund at 100%, and then we're the ones explaining why costs have gone up, driven up so much. So it's difficult to keep up. It's difficult to keep up with the labor laws and the amount that we're spending. So going back to Chapter 90, we get basically $375,000 a year. With increasing labor costs and just fixed costs for these people to be doing business, what we used to get done for $375,000, we're probably only getting 60% of that done now for the same 375 following. So that's why that's an important attribute to Chapter 90, because we just keep falling further and further behind, and nobody's recognizing that we're falling further and further behind, and it's costing our taxpayers that much more. And we just, we just don't have the money to keep going at this rate and trying to do our infrastructure, and I think infrastructure is a big priority. There's just not any money available, not to that scale. We talked about some of the millions of dollars that it would cost. It's just not there, and for us to go off for a debt bottle and forget about it, we put everybody in town out of business to do it. I mean, yeah, we could do it, but we got a business doing it. Nobody would want to reside here because taxes, we just do that, so.
Yeah, no, that's the whole point.
The unfunded mandate is really what's killing municipalities, is what I'm trying to get to.
And I think the state, like you said, a state mandated system where, you know, X amount of dollars, and they're not meeting that, is, I think that's kind of getting into the public consciousness more than Kuschna's dealing with that.
Absolutely.
And I think that is a huge issue because it's only, it's only snowballing, clearly. And unless that's fixed, you know, I think, and I think it would be giving the small towns leeway for things like prevailing wage, things like labor laws, in exchange for getting reimbursed at, you know, 100%, you know, make sure every side is, you know, holding their end of the bargain. So, yeah, I'm gonna make that a priority. The underfunding with Chapter 90 and 70 has always been a priority.
And the regional vocational transportation is one that I asked for, have you put inside of there, because that used to be 100% too. So the state was great on regionalization years ago. Again, same effect, we're gonna pay you 100% of your transportation, don't have that as a factor in your cost, and now for every dollar that we're taking, we're spending on transportation. We can't spend on our education or equipment to educate in a regional vocational school. So I know there's, there's a lot of people pushing out there for getting closer to the mean, which would be about 85, 90%. I mean, if we could get back to 80%, it would go, it would be leaps and bounds what we could do with that extra money in educating our children, so, whether regional and vocational schools, so.
One more thing we just ran across, we, our DBW is a very talented crew. They did a little sewer project, we wanted to expand on it. In order for resident to receive a no interest loan, it has to be done by a private contractor. If we do it in-house, they don't qualify for that same type.
Zero.
You know, 0%, it just don't make no sense. We're trying to save money on our rent, and it's, I mean, it doesn't wash. I mean, I don't understand that. It's, you know, if we do it with a private contractor, they get 0% interest. We do it in-house, they.
For the benefit?
For the benefit, yeah, for the benefit fees.
What, 0% interest?
We have an infrastructure loan account from the state, that if we borrow the money to do the sewer project, it's 0%, but it won't recognize the fact that we can do the work in-house, it has to be contracted out. It's a, it's called a Mass Grant, and the primary reason for that is the legislature was trying to encourage in the lean times when people needed jobs, it was a jobs program. Well, right now, unemployment is so low, it's even hard to find a contractor to bid on it. So I can do it, but I want the money at 0%.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point, because you made the point yourself, it's, unemployment is obviously lowering, and, you know, it's a different time, you know, especially when you have all these programs that are unfunded to begin with. So I think, it's a lot of rolling back and a lot of leeway, I think we should be giving what towns, especially with things like that.
Mr. Grow. Just congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
Throwing a lot at you.
Yeah, no, I'm excited. I'm actually glad that.
We look forward to working with you.
Yeah, I'm excited to get to work on all this stuff, seriously. And thank you for all your hard work putting into this. I know this wasn't easy, so a lot, a lot of issues and all these particular matters. So thank you for preparing all this.
This, I read in the letter, have also extended an invitation to use either the community, the council on aging, or the town hall for your office hours.
Oh, good, yeah.
If you're convinced.
I was, I'm in the process of figuring all that stuff out, so that's great to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Previously, I think it was done at Council on Aging.
Yeah.
So whatever, if you want to go down there and try it out.
It hasn't been done during my tenure.
Well, it was supposed to be.
Well, we understand that, we won't go there, but anyways, you know, that's usually where it was done in the past. I don't know, you know, what kind of reception your person had.
Yeah, no, they've been great to me so far, so I think that would be a good fit.
Yeah.
All right, once again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
I'll be sticking around.
All right, thank you. Next, I want to go out of order to new business, the appointment of Treasurer Collector Catherine Ulla, and then Tom, what's that, Muller, I'm sorry. The town agrees to employ Catherine Muller to perform functions and related duties as Treasurer Collector as specified in the town of Kuschna charter by applicable bylaws, applicable rules and regulations. Is there a motion to appoint?
Actually, may I, Mr. Chairman? I'd like to introduce Catherine, Catherine Muller is here with us this evening. Why don't you come up and face the music? I'd like to introduce you to Catherine Muller. She is our new, with your approval, our new Treasurer Collector. She was many years in Blackstone. We were able, of course, that seems to be a good recruiting pool for us, having gotten Julie from that town as well. She's already waiting in, she processed 98 refunds today, if I count that properly, today for overpayment on taxes and water bills. So those are now catching up, getting a little complaints from people because we've been a little slow getting those out. That was her first task, she's got that mastered. Now she's dealing with the cash book and getting her feet on the ground. I appreciate in short term how much she's accomplished. She started last Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd make a motion to appoint Catherine Muller as Treasurer Collector as presented, and I would ask the board to go into executive session at the next available meeting to come up with a contract agreement for Ms. Muller.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Should I, I would shake your hand.
Yeah.
If you want me to.
Even one, so.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Should we go back to the beginning?
Yes, go back to the minutes. To approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes of the Executive Board of Selectmen's meeting of October 23, 2018, regular session minutes as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, into meeting mail, No Shave November Campaign. The Kuschna Police Chief is partnering with Homebase for the Fourth Annual No Shave November Campaign in support of Homebase's mission to help veterans and families heal from the invisible wounds. Last year, 62 cities in Massachusetts raised more than $125,000 during the campaign. All Kuschna officers who participate will donate $100. Anyone else would like to participate or make a donation, contact Homebase at their website. He was here, I don't know if he wanted to speak on it, but he left on that.
I think he was planning on.
Well, we can move on if he comes back, but there's no vote taken. Next is a member from the town clerk. The town clerk would like to, like the board to appoint Janet Barrett as an election inspector to assist in future elections.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Janet Barrett as an election inspector as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is agricultural commission appointment. Joanne Chopper is requesting to be appointed to the Agricultural Commission. The commission is, its quota for members at this time, there is an alternate position available. Ms. Chopper was informed and is willing to accept the alternate appointment until May 1st, 2018, or until a full member opening becomes available. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Joanne Chopper as an alternate.
Uh-huh. Chopper.
Chopper. As an alternate member of the Agricultural Commission until May 1st, 2018, as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Is that supposed to be May 1st, 2019?
Oh, 2019.
Thank you.
Yeah, good catch.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna state the man. This is Lakeville Animal Shelter Agreement. The renewal for the agreement between Lakeville and Kuschna to employ the Lakeville Animal Shelter will expire in December. Lakeville has forwarded a renewal contract for our approval. The terms remain the same as last year. Is there a motion to enter into the agreement?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement with Lakeville for services of the Lakeville Animal Shelter as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
This is the exact same agreement we signed last year. As in slight changes, but I checked with Becky, and she was fine with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution to declare items as surplus property. Are there all the vehicles not bid numbers?
No.
Christopher Kuschna Fire EMS Department requests approval from the Board of Selectmen to declare the attached list of items as surplus property and property disposable. 1997 Ford Econo van ambulance, and 1975 Ford fire truck. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to clarify EMS items as surplus property as presented.
Second question. What happens to it?
The fire truck, I'm happy to get rid of for the, for the value of the scrap metal. In other words, we don't get anything, but we don't pay anything either. The ambulance will probably bring about 300 bucks.
Okay.
Do we have two to get rid of, or we got rid of one?
No, we got, we already got rid of the other two ambulances. Town was, we found a town in New Hampshire that needed an ambulance, and so that was an easy thing to do.
It's nice to repurpose.
It really is. I saw a picture of it, they've already got it stripped down, and they're using the parts from one to make one complete one, and the state of New Hampshire's working to certify it, so it went to good life. Although I don't think the fire truck is going anyplace.
No, I don't think so, for someone I've been looking at out of the town garage.
Yes.
Do we have to advertise? The motion has been made in second, and we just didn't go through the formal, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask one more question of surplus material? Is, we have to advertise that as surplus, as in laws, and just on the website, newspaper advertising, we don't have to go through all that rigmarole? In case somebody out there is interested in.
Because of the value of this product, I don't have to advertise it. If I had done a bigger batch, or the value of the individual item had been excess, then you have to advertise it.
Some people are looking for antique fire trucks, like parades and things like that. Some people actually buy them.
Actually, I was thinking what I found out about this fire truck is because it's a gasoline fire truck, nobody wants it.
A collector might.
The only thing that somebody seems to have some value is, apparently, there's a generator on board that seems to have, the attraction is the generator.
So does a chance to be solid, does a chance to be scrap it? So there's a chance to be sold, there's a chance to be scrapped? That's the one.
Correct. I'm gonna try to get the most I can for it.
What is done by CEO bid, is that correct?
In this particular case, you put it on the website, somebody sends you an email, and then you stack the emails up, and then one day you look at it and say, "Well, who wins?" There's a deadline, and you don't have to do CEO.
Is it to the top bidder, though?
It's to the, yeah.
It has to be by law?
It has to be by law.
Auto procurement?
Correct, yep. And so then, for example, let's say the three of you bid on it, Roger bid the most, I go to Roger and say, "Okay, give me the money." If Roger can't give me the money, then it goes to the next guy.
Correct.
But usually, when they come in and they bid, they're thrilled to get it out of here as fast as possible.
Yeah, my wife wants a fire truck in our driveway, so...
Why not?
Well, unfortunately, we can't get it started, so we ain't going too far.
You better put that in the ad, you are responsible for removal, right?
Yes. Town Administrators Report. Thank you. Somewhere in your package, that I can't find right now, is a budget letter that I've submitted to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is...
Keep going. Yes, right after that.
Oh, here we go, it's hiding. Okay. The Finance Committee has approved the letter, or I should say the Chairman has approved the letter. Also, in your package should be the Town Meeting Proposed Schedule, which starts with December 12th. Do we all have that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I require budgets from the Departments by the 12th of December. Off the record, I'd be happy if they got in by the end of December. January and February, the Finance Committee will start budget hearings. February 5th, the Board of Selectmen I'm recommending will open the warrant. March 5th, they'll close the warrant. March will have Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen hearings on spending. April 1st is the Town Election, I just put that in there because it's part of the process. April 12th, the warrant goes to press. April 29th is the first advertisement in the newspaper. May 6th is the second advertisement. Somewhere in between that and the 13th, which is the actual Town E-date that I'm recommending, a moderators' meeting will be held. Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Mr. Noble, December 12th's an aggressive deadline for the Departments, especially when it comes to the school Departments in Old Colony. There's still deliberations at Old Colony.
By law, school Departments are supposed to give us the budget by the end of December. We know that's not really practical, so usually I require, and therefore, since the Finance Committee has plenty of work before it, as does the Board of Selectmen, I usually go for a deadline for them the week after the February school vacation, which seems to work. But we gotta give them a target, otherwise it just drags.
Yeah, absolutely. I got you, I just, they've always been last.
They've always been, the school will always be last, and I'm fine with that. It is 50% of our budget or better. It is, there are a lot of moving pieces to that, particularly transportation and special education, but I got a plan, and I gotta print the warrant, so I'm giving them till the end of February, but I think that's pretty generous. You know, I could enforce the state law, but then I'd get fiction. So I want a really educated budget.
Well, I don't think, they don't see their numbers from the state until late anyway, right?
Well, sometimes they don't see their numbers even...
It'll be a guessing, it'll be something based on the last three-year average when it comes to Chapter 70 and things.
For example, when I project our state aid for Chapter 90 and for the Cherry Sheet, I just level one, because who knows? Right now, I do honestly believe, based upon Governor's statements and that which is coming out of the Mass Municipal Association, that there'll be an increase in local aid, but I wouldn't count on it, and you only count on it when the check comes.
Correct. Thank you.
So this, by the way, is completely the Board of Selectmen's determination, when to open the warrant, when to close the warrant, which articles to accept, which articles not to accept, and I'm putting a target before you that would make Town Meeting the second Monday in May.
The Board has the flexibility as we approach the dates, so we provide flexibility to it if we need.
Yes.
That's all.
What I'm asking for, though, what I really like from the Board is a commitment that it is May 13th, because I gotta work against the deadline.
Oh, absolutely. For Town Meeting, yeah, absolutely.
The other dates, we can sort of, you know, if we wanna forgive somebody, we wanna give somebody a little more time.
Correct.
Fine. But I need a target. Now, one of the things that this Board expressed to me was you wanted to hear more of the Department budgets in January and February than you did last year, so I'm lining that up as well. Some will be in here before the Finance Committee, others will be in here after the Finance Committee. My basic feeling, as long as they're here before we finalize the budget, you should be okay with that. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna go to the Finance Committee, explain the rationale behind either, you know, a more expensive budget or a decrease in their budget, an increase in decreasing their budget, and that's fine. The Finance Committee doesn't have to vote on it, but they can go and get that information to digest it for their next follow-up meeting, until we meet on those.
Look, usually the Finance Committee, in the two years that I've been here, won't vote on the budget until it's, all the pieces are here. So they won't vote on an individual Department's budget.
Right, just give them something to look at, and then maybe bring them back in and say we have more questions, or committee members may have more questions down the line when they get home and start digesting it all.
But it is my goal to put before you a list of those Departments that report to you, and the size of their budget, and then you guys can decide who you wanna hear from